Welcome you to the October meeting of the Garrett County Board of Education. We're so glad you came and be a part of this this time. I'll call the meeting to order at least in only three board members are present. Two board members couldn't be here tonight, but we do have Miss Ava, one of our student representatives here. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order. If you would, join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much, Ava. Please stand and join me to say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May you see it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Shall move. Mr. Hertz made the motion to have a second.
A second.
Ms. Davis, second. All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. The agenda is adopted. Item two is communications and item A is recognitions. And first, we'll have the Garrett County Dental Office Equipment Staff of the Month. Y'all want to move on? Okay, y'all will join me. You want to join us too? Come right at it.
Usually I enjoy doing these recognitions. This first one, I'm not sure that I'm going to enjoy because I might get in a lot of trouble on this one. Because we're going to recognize somebody who's asked me not to recognize them. We're going to do it anyway because I think everybody needs to hear about this. Chris Lang is our Chief Information Officer and he's our Director of Instructional Technology. He's the one back behind that area right now. And he, I don't know if we'll even get him to come out today, but I wanted to share a couple of things with you about the position that he has. Mr. Lang has one of the more challenging jobs in the world of education. He's often the most needed person in the district while being the most underappreciated. Chris is responsible for ensuring all the technology platforms we use each day are operational. From phones and copiers to infinite campus and clever, Chris makes sure connections exist to the approved sites so staff and students can function. Yet at the same time, he's tasked with ensuring those connections are always safe and not vulnerable to hacks, scams, malware, phishing, and any number of other attacks that can occur in the world of technology. Each day, someone will complain that they have to deal with two-factor authentication. But in doing so, the structures put in place by Mr. Lang and K D E make that frustrated staff person safe from outside harm. Chris does a great job of keeping it safe even when we don't realize it and even when we don't like it. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for dealing with both challenges with accessibility and safety. So would you thank Chris for what he does for us? Like I said, I'm not sure he'll come out. And if no, you can reach me on my email tomorrow, you'll know why. He just shut me down. Next, we'll recognize our Garrett County Schools Whittaker Bank Teacher of the Month. And our Teacher of the Month this month is Sabrina Coffey. Sabrina is the lead special education teacher and special education consultant at Garrett County High School. Ms. Coffey's extraordinary commitment to students, staff, and the entire Garrett County community exemplifies the very best of our profession. Sabrina is not only a nationally board-certified special education teacher, but also a trusted leader and advocate within our school and district. In her role, she works tirelessly to support administration, general and special education teachers, students, and families. Mrs. Coffey is also known for going above and beyond her formal responsibilities. She provides instruction for homebound students and those in the Garrett County Learning Academy, ensuring no learner is left behind. She lends her support across all areas of the school, including the M S D classroom, and is an active person in school athletics as a coach and mentor. Her passion and presence are felt in every hallway, classroom, and event. What truly sets Sabrina apart, however, is her deep-rooted connection to the Garrett County community. She brings not only professional expertise, but a heartfelt understanding of the families and students she serves. Her reputation is superb, built on years of trust, integrity, and exceptional service. In every way, Sabrina Coffey embodies the spirit of educational excellence. Her impact is profound, her commitment unwavering, and her contributions invaluable. Congratulations, Ms. Coffey. Next is the Garrett County Schools and Farmers National Bank Students of the Month. And we'll begin with C D R, Philip Martin. Philip, the first grader at C D R, and he goes above and beyond, giving his best effort every day at school. He excels in reading, writing, math, and science. C D R is already proud of his academic growth this school year. Additionally, he sets a great example for the other students in first grade. He follows school and classroom rules, he's respectful to all, and will always help the friend indeed. Philip has shown others what it means to be kind, caring, and considerate while also showing everyone how hard it will work for you. Keep up the good work, Philip. Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month is from Langston Elementary. It's Nora Graff. Nora is also a first grader at L E S, and she follows the leperd expectations every day. She's a hard worker, is always kind to her classmates, she's a role model for peers, and we're proud to call her a leper. Congratulations for being Student of the Month. Next from Paintlick Elementary is Annabelle Cunningham. Annabelle is a fourth grader and is so enthusiastic about learning. She comes to school daily with a smile on her face and is always focused and engaged. Her bubbly spirit is contagious and will easily brighten anyone's day. Annabelle takes studying seriously and always goes above and beyond with everything she does. She's a great role model for our students and we're proud of her at Paintlick Elementary. Congratulations, Annabelle. Next from Garrett Middle School is Brayden Adams. Brayden is a sixth grader at G M S, and he consistently demonstrates a positive attitude, strong work ethic, and respect for peers and teachers. He sets an excellent example by showing the pride elements on a daily basis. Congratulations on being our Student of the Month. We're glad you're a G M S Cooper. Congratulations, Brayden. And from Garrett County High School, Spencer Jones. Spencer is a senior at G C H S and is an essential leader for the G C H S marching band. He's worked hard to be a leader in multiple clubs and has been instrumental in enhancing the culture of the school. Spencer is on the principal's advisory team and helped implement a freshman peer program. He'll earn over thirty hours in dual credit through the Dual Credit and A P programs. Thank you, Spencer, for your leadership in the marching band and for helping create a culture that focuses on giving your best the first time. Congratulations, Spencer.
All right, thank you very much. Item B is site-based decision-making minutes. I hope my co-fellow, a board member, will head off here and report to these. Item C is audience comments. Can we have any audience comments?
I'm sorry, we don't.
Item B, your board member comments. Any board member, anything you'd like to share. That brings us to Superintendent. Do you have a construction management bonding capacity update?
I do. I have a bonding capacity update that you can see on the screen right now. The capacity has risen to twelve million nine hundred thirty thousand dollars. As you see, the interest rate that has dropped. And again, as long as the interest rates go down, your bonding capacity will go up. Bear continues to provide this for you on a monthly basis and will continue to make sure you're fully updated on what's going on as that occurs. Okay, and item two is advanced coursework plans. So you have attached in your, well, not attached to anything, but in front of you, you should be able to see this document. What we wanted to do tonight was just point out to you the work that is going on to ensure that all of the advanced coursework policies and practices align as they're supposed to, based on the requirements that we have from the legislature. What you see here is a practice and a plan, not your policy. A policy already existed. Each of our schools now have S B D M policies that align. And the idea here that is as you work through this, you'll be able to see the opportunities that are happening at the elementary schools, at the middle school, and at the high school that provides our students with advanced coursework opportunities. And as we continue, we'll continue to add to those throughout the future. These are practices which allows our schools to have a little bit of flexibility. If they were in policy, we would be locked into some things, and we don't want to get to that spot. We want the schools to have the flexibility to meet the needs of students as they're working through it. So tonight's intent was just to make sure that you all were aware of the connection and the unity that exists between all of our schools across the district. If you don't care also, I'd like to touch on a couple of other things real quickly. Would like to thank the community members who've come to our forums. We've completed two of the community forums. One more to go next week at Langston Elementary on Tuesday at six o'clock. So folks who would be interested in coming to that, we'd be happy to have them. And then I wanted to do a couple of other things if I could. Obviously, one of the things that we have is our student representatives here. And I wanted to highlight something real quickly if I could. Over fall break, Ava Maxwell, who is sitting here, made a trip to New York City for college visits. Most of our students don't make trips to New York City for college visits. And so she has aspirations of being in school there next year. She's a senior this year, and I think that deserves some recognition because we don't have, not everybody wants to go to New York City for anything much less go to, go to school. So if you would, thank Ava for taking that kind of risk and for having that kind of vision for what she wants to do. Claire is not with us tonight. We were hoping that she would be here tonight. Actually, we hoped that she wouldn't be here tonight. She is on the girls' soccer team at Garrett County High School, and they played last night. They have advanced as far as anybody ever has at the high school girls' soccer level. They were competing in the semifinals of region last night, and we hope that she wouldn't be here because she would be competing for a regional title tonight. That's not why she's here, not here tonight. But anyway, I wanted to make sure that we recognize the soccer program, the girls' soccer program, and her involvement there. So hopefully, she'll be with us next month and we can say thank you to her as well.
Thank you, sir. I agree with reports, and of course, we all have access to treasure report. And also, we receive periodic bills as presented. Item four is consent agenda. If no board member will pull anything out, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as it is printed here tonight.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hertz, second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor of the consent agenda as adopted. Which brings us to item four, the action agenda. And item A is to approve a pay application for the high school student athletic fields and facilities.
As you all know, you've been doing this for several months now. We've had a couple of months where you didn't have a pay application to approve. We're very, very close to tying up the very final components. My suspicion is in the next month or two, we will have your final pay application. This month's pay application is simply for two, two of our vendors, and you see their names there. Total cost is four hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Based on the approval that we have from our construction management and from our architect, it's my recommendation that you approve the pay application for the Garrett County High School student athletic fields and facilities.
Thank you, sir. You heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the pay application for Garrett County High School student athletic fields and facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Made the motion. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Ms. Davis, second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve, item B is to approve K E T S first offer of assistance.
Each year, we get offers of assistance from C A T S, from the Kentucky Department of Education, that are used for technology. And when those offers come in, we need your acceptance. We also need to make sure that you're fully aware that when that offer comes in, we are agreeing to match that amount of money. Ms. Coffey budgets for that on a yearly basis, so this is not a surprise to us. This is money that is, in a sense, free and useful for, for Mr. Lang. We were talking earlier about keeping it safe and making things available to us. So it's my recommendation that we approve the C A T S first offer of assistance.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the C A T S first offer of assistance.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hertz, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve R T A grant application for all three elementary schools.
Currently, all three of our elementary schools are utilizing an R T A grant. And the opportunity to, to request the grant application process again is on us. In order for us to do that, we need the board's approval because there is a match that we have to provide for that as well. I think the deadline is in just a couple of weeks, November first, I believe, something in that area. So you're not approving their application, you're approving their permit, giving them permission to submit that application. So it's my recommendation that you approve of the R T A grant applications for all three of our elementary schools.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the R T A. I make a motion we approve the R T A grant applications for all three elementary schools.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert made the motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor. Item D is to approve early graduation for a Garrett County High School student who's been accepted for the spring of the University of Louisville.
So you've said that really well. There's not a lot left to say. We have a student who has received that permission and has been invited to start in January. In order for that to happen, we need the board to approve an early graduation. We've attached the admission letter for you just to prove that this is not somebody who's just trying to figure out how to get out of school. They'll actually be going and getting started. So it's my recommendation that we approve of the early graduation of a G C H S student to attend the University of Louisville for the spring semester of 2026.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I approve the early graduation for one of our high school students.
All right, Ms. Davis made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to say I'm so proud and impressed with our students, you mentioned Ms. Ava, what she did on fall break and now to have one of our students that has all of their credits and is going to start college her.
Yep, that's great.
This says a lot about our student system. All right, having said that, anybody else? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor, item D is approved. Item D is to approve speech therapy contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So this is actually going to be for us an interim position just for filling in during a maternity leave. We do not have enough speech therapists in the district to absorb that loss. So what we're asking for is you to allow us to have a speech therapy contract with an individual to fill that gap during that period of time. Based on that need, it's my recommendation that you approve of the speech therapy contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the speech therapy contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert made the motion, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Ms. Davis seconded, all in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All board members present were in favor. Item F is to approve Avaya D A A S renewal for phone service. It's a three-year renewal.
Thank you for saying that. That keeps me from having to do it. Our phones are up for renewal and the company has done a good job for us. Total cost on that, I've attached here so that everybody can see it over the three-year period. It's twenty-six thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty cents, so slightly less than nine thousand dollars a year. Mr. Lang feels like this is a good move forward for us and it is for a three-year cycle. So it's my recommendation that you approve of the Avaya D A A S phone service contract for the next three years.
Okay. Is this like A T and T or?
Avaya is the provider of the hardware that we have and then it runs through our internet services.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I approve the renewal of the phone service for three years.
Okay. Ms. Davis made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hertz seconded, anybody else have a question or comment? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All three board members present were in favor, item F is approved. Item G is to approve updates to the Gifted and Talented Manual.
So this is an update to the manual itself. We expect over the rest of the year to potentially make some policy changes, but this was done in order to try to streamline the Gifted and Talented Manual to eliminate some redundancies that were there, but at the same time also to create some opportunity for students that might not have existed before and at the same time to make sure that we are identifying correctly individuals in the right area. So this is a way for us to advance opportunities for our gifted and talented students. As I said, we plan to come back with a couple of changes to policy. This is not a policy change, this is just a change to the manual and because that's all that we're asking for here at this time, it's my recommendation that you approve of the updates to the Gifted and Talented Manual.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion we approve the updates to the Gifted and Talented Manual.
All right, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Any questions or comments? With a long dot. All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All three board members present were in favor. The item G is approved. Item H is to approve updated child nutrition procurement plan.
So currently, our policy says that if there has to be a quick micro purchase, that that micro purchase, if it goes over a thousand dollars, has to be bid. And as you can imagine during a month, if there's something that has to happen quickly when it comes to food service, a thousand dollars is not a lot of money. So asking our food service staff to have to go through a bid process that has to happen quickly is a lot to ask. The federal guidelines allow for that to be ten thousand dollars. So we've been far below what the federal guidelines are and so in this particular situation, we think it's time to make that adjustment. So what we're asking you to do is to make an approval of a micro purchasing threshold from one thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars in the child nutrition procurement plan and that would be my recommendation, so that you approve that.
All right, thank you for explaining it. I went over that today and that clarifies. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I move we update the child nutrition procurement plan to ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Davis made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hertz seconded, any other questions or comments? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All three board members present were in favor, item H is approved. Item I is to approve update to the Garrett County Foods Facility Kitchen Use Policy.
Ms. Morrow has worked hard to get both of these together for us and I appreciate the effort that she has made here. This update to the facility kitchen use policy is to make sure that anybody who wants to utilize those facilities knows what the expectations are, what the requirements are. It ensures safety of any individuals who are using it and it also ensures that the equipment that is in that area is protected and taken good care of. So this update will, in many ways, make it much clearer how you can have access to the kitchen if you need to use it and if you are going to use it, what steps you need to follow. It clarifies a lot of things that way. Because of that, I would recommend approval of the update to the G C S Facility Kitchen Use Policy.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the update to the G C S Facility Kitchen Use Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert made the motion, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Ms. Davis seconded, anybody have any thoughts or comments? All in favor, let me know what lifted hand. All three board members present were in favor. That's the last item. Which brings us to item six.
That's the last item.
Do I have a motion, good journey?
I make a motion, good journey.
I second that motion.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all, we're spacious, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.